Yes.
Perfect. All right. Well, thanks, everybody for joining us today. Joining from the consultant team are myself, Taylor and Chris from Fair and Peers. We have Juan, I believe, in the room from R and M, and Jeannie from Kenny. So we've got the full team here to be able to answer any questions related to things like engagement, or analysis, or project management. We do look forward to hearing your feedback on the plan. That's why we are at this point, right? Because we put a product out there and now we really, we want to make it better. So anything you can tell us to do that, we are, we are happy to. We've already received some feedback and I've actually made a couple of adjustments already. So we're going to show you that today. But let me just quick walk you through the key highlights from the planning process and plan itself, just to give you some context. So next slide, Taylor. Great, thanks. So first and foremost, this plan is about people. It's creating safe spaces and environments for everyone to be able to get where they need to go and back. We started every meeting with this point and we incorporated this type of language into the document. We know the data are really important, but we also did our best to really humanize this issue to get everyone to understand why safety is so important. I think it's so easy to forget about that as we, you know, go for a walk or ride our bikes or get in our vehicles, but we really just kept trying to bring that point back home in this planning document. So, next slide. Here's a quick reminder of the plan's focus. So Chapter 1 really focused on the process that we used to develop the plan. Chapter 2 looked at the existing safety program in the region, and then what stakeholders kind of identified as the key opportunities to move that program forward. Chapter 3, we shared information about the who, what, when, where, and why crashes are occurring. Chapter 5 focused on, what are the five biggest issues really contributing to fatal and serious injury crashes? And then what are the most promising solutions to address those? Chapter 5 focused on solutions for five corridors where reducing fatalities and serious injuries would really have a big impact. And then Chapter 6 focused on those non-engineering solutions that really address some of the opportunities that stakeholders identified in terms of evolving the safety program moving forward. So it was really a three-pronged approach to addressing challenges and solutions in the region. Next slide. So we did create this plan using the safe system approach as the guiding framework. So that's that circle on the left there. The safe system was endorsed by the US Department of Transportation in their 2022 National Roadway Safety Strategy. The principles you can see are vision statements of a safe system are in that outer ring. And then the goals or the things we're really working toward in terms of safety are in the middle ring. And this wheel really helped us focus all of the programs, policies, and projects that, just to ensure that whatever we are recommending really aligned with these principles and elements. And we've actually made that connection clear as we go through the deck in terms of how everything then feeds back into kind of these core principles and elements. Because we use the safe system approach for this plan, this document is compliant. So if you choose to pursue a Safe Streets for All grant, you'll be eligible to do so. It's a federal grant program for local agencies and NPOs to essentially fund safety projects identified in plans like these. Next slide. So here's the vision, goals, and guiding strategies for a plan. Again, this was developed in coordination with stakeholders and you can see the language really reflects a lot of the things in the safe system approach. Again, we are trying to make that tie throughout this entire process. The vision, goals, and guiding strategies really helped us prioritize everything that we ended up including in the plan. So essentially, every program, project, or policy recommendation that's in the document aligns with needed changes to policies, better prioritization of safety and agency functions, education, and/or engineering solutions. Next slide. So none of this work was done in a vacuum. Sure, many of you in the room were participants in this process. We engaged stakeholders and the public multiple times over the course of the project to obtain feedback on both existing and future challenges, as well as solutions to these particular challenges. You can see the four bullet points on the screen are the times that we did engage folks in this process. And the safety survey in particular was really fruitful and beneficial. There's a whole section in the plan kind of related to the results of that and you can see that we got over 400 responses. So really did our best to incorporate that feedback, as well as all the other feedback that we received into the programs, policies, and projects. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor to talk a little bit about the analysis that we used and really how we focused that in, again, to really get at the key things causing fatal and serious injury crashes, as well as the key solutions. So Taylor, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so the data that we analyzed, just as a reminder, was provided from the municipality from 2017 to 2021. And that, since we started the plan in early 2023, that was the most recent data that we had at the time, which is why we're using those five years. And we analyzed modal crash trends, GIS data, and locations to really get a picture of what the core safety needs are. So as shown here and in the plan, pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorcyclists were overrepresented in fatal and serious injury crashes. And some of the top crash types and behaviors were speeding, distracted driving, angled crashes, and failure to yield. So as we developed the solutions and the project locations in this plan, we kept all of this data in mind and we really worked under the assumption that if we could make the road safer for the most vulnerable road users, they would be safer for all users. So after we had a snapshot of the modal trends, we took a look at the crash and road data in detail and we looked for issues that contributed the most significantly to fatalities and serious injuries. So these five profiles arose. And really what the goal was from the development of these profiles is to focus solutions and resources on these five areas so that the chance of decreasing KSIs or serious injuries and fatalities improves. So like Nicole said, we did update the profiles slightly from what you saw in the last version of the plan. So this is a preview of one of the new profiles. And to address the biggest challenges based on the profiles, we identified several potential engineering countermeasures that impact these severe and fatal crashes for each profile, instead of highlighting them at a broader level. So you'll see them, you know, here in low, medium, and high cost. So we also retain the maps to show where the fatal and serious injury crashes for each of these profiles are occurring. And this will help focus these solutions to the locations that are most in need of them. One thing that we will also be doing as a part of this update is to add a supplemental document to the main plan that outlines all the potential solutions and countermeasures that we are going to be referencing, so based on this cost and quick build alternative option. And I'll pass it back to Nicole.
Yeah, great, thanks, Taylor. So yeah, I hope, I hope that makes a lot of sense as we really wanted to focus in on the key things that were contributing to fatal and serious injuries and then the critical solutions to address those things. So that's why the focus on the five and then the solutions that you saw. But as I mentioned, everything we did for this plan tied back to how could we make your system safer? So the profiles that Taylor just showed you align with the safe system approach. They focus on the fatal and serious injury crashes, which are the most important. We're going beyond just the historical crash data to consider some of the other things that are really impacting safety and coming up with solutions to address those. The solutions that we came up with, I know she showed the slide quickly, really reflect the safe system elements. So those things in that inner wheel, they focus on speeds, they focus on roads, they focus on road users. There's a focus on the most vulnerable with the thought process of if we can retrofit or fix a road for people who bike or walk or wheel, it's going to be safe for all users. And then we're implementing hopefully solutions across multiple locations, not just at one spot to try to fix one problem. So again, that link back to the safe system. So next slide. So in addition to those, those profiles, right? What are, what are kind of the regional level challenges and the regional solutions? We also focused in and we identified several corridors that if addressed could also make a real impact on fatal and serious injury crash reduction. So originally, based on where severe crashes were occurring, so just crash information alone, we did start with a list of about 100 locations that had the potential for safety improvement. But that's a lot. There's only so many people, there's only so much time, there's only so many resources. And so we narrowed that list down based on those five criteria that you see here. And this really helps us determine where solutions were the most needed, but also made the most sense. So ultimately, we did end up with nine priority locations, but we identified safe system solutions for five of those. I know the map might be a little bit hard to see, but the cut sheet solutions were completed for corridor A, B, C, E, and G. And just to kind of make that a little bit more clear, Taylor, if you could go to the next slide there. Here's A, B, and C. Again, so looked at these in more detail to come up with specific safety solutions. And you can see the bullet points show the rationale for why these were selected, which matched with that criteria I showed you on the previous slide. And again, we looked at things like if these locations fell within an equity area, if these locations were identified on the AMAT's non-motorized plan, if these locations fell within an area that supports transit development, and also where, you know, the most severe crashes were occurring. So these are the first three that we did cut sheets for. And then Taylor, if you move to the, the next slide, here are the remaining two. Again, with the kind of supporting as to why we selected these locations. In addition, there are a lot of locations we found that had improvements that were planned or programmed for related to safety. And so those, those fell off our list. We were focused really on locations that just didn't have anything on the books. And then if you move to the next slide, you know, here is what the solutioning for each of those five locations looks like. Again, with the goal to really focus solutions, efforts, and resources at these five locations. Sorry, I've got a tickle in my throat. Okay, next slide, I think I got it. So again, how are we aligning these locations with the safe system approach? Similar to the profiles, we're really focusing on preventing fatals and serious injuries. Two, we wanted to make this a collaborative process to identify those locations, but also it needs to be a collaborative process to implement solutions. Again, everything on those cut sheets really reflects safe speeds, safe roads, safe road users. And also, we are focusing on the most vulnerable folks. So next two slides, I think wrap it up and then maybe I can cough a little bit. Sorry, just getting over a sinus infection. Okay, so lastly, there's a lot of other intangible things that go into making a system safer. It's not just about engineering solutions. So in addition to the on-the-ground projects and countermeasures, we also identified policy and programmatic and education opportunities. Again, the goal is to focus solutions, efforts, and resources on these four areas as another layer to really reduce fatal and severe injury crashes. So again, regional profiles, location-specific, and then these kind of non-engineering higher-level solutions. So last slide, Taylor. Apologies. So again, by addressing these intangibles, we are doing everything that we can to make the system safer. So here's how those programmatic and policy solutions really address the safe system approaches. Is one, we tried to develop actions that make it easy for everyone to understand and consider safety and their job responsibilities, even if safety is not their main priority. Two, trying to implement solutions that make streets safer for most vulnerable folks and then in turn for all users. And then lastly, we're really trying to get the public to care and take responsibility for themselves. So providing education and awareness to folks was really important and another critical part of this last piece of the plan. So with that, I think I've gone through the entirety of the document and really the key things that I wanted to re-highlight with you and key points I wanted to make. And with that, I guess I'll stop, go on mute for a sec so I can cough. But we are all here and happy to take any comments, questions, and feedback. Again, we want to make this a great resource for all, for all of you to use moving forward.
Awesome, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so questions or comments from committee members? If you're in the room, just kind of raise your hand or motion. And if you're online, just raise your hand as well or unmute and let me know that you want to speak. Nothing? It's perfect? No issues or concerns? We're doing good? Okay. I mean, this, this is, this is for the committee members. So please, we have Melinda in the room real quick.
Well, I can't wait to dig into it and look at those A through G segments and the countermeasures proposed. That looks really interesting and I can't wait to look at it in more detail. Did you guys find that, you know, light and level of light or seasonal aspects were a trend in some of the, you know, the crash history data?
Yeah, Taylor, do you want to take a first stab at that since you did all the analysis? And then maybe Jeannie, if you have anything to add as well?
Yeah, I can jump in. So I think some of the trends that we noted, particularly for some of the pedestrian crashes, was that they were, a higher proportion was occurring during the fall and winter month, which is why we added in some countermeasures for, especially with this new addition, to address lighting and then roadway maintenance as well. And then for lighting, we did note in some locations that that was something that was occurring in the darker months. We wanted to make sure that we understood the patterns and we weren't, you know, the timeline of when these crashes were occurring, especially lighting looks different in January than it does in August.
Yeah, and Jeannie, any perspective from you? Less from the regional level that Taylor just talked about and more at the, those five cut sheet corridor-specific level?
I can't, I can't remember, sorry. Calling that out specifically, I think there might have been a few locations where I saw some dark. I'm looking at it, Taylor. Should have run it before I came.
Sorry to put you on the spot there. I'm just looking, looking through it now. And it does look like there is some, some lighting references in there.
Did you have more, Melinda?
You know, was there anything interesting to note in Midtown? I didn't notice, I didn't have time to digest those, those through, those five corridors. But was there, I'm just curious if there was anything beyond, let's say, Northern Lights? It looked like it was more kind of towards the east side of town.
I think Midtown, the reason you see that is, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Nicole, Taylor, and Jeannie. I think the reason you see that is because Midtown and kind of like West Anchorage is already being looked at through the program.
Yeah.
You know, we have a number of corridor plans that are being looked at or actual projects. So like Downtown has the Downtown Street Engineering. Then we have Minnesota High and Low Corridor. Then we have Northern Lights, the western side of Northern Lights that's being looked at for another corridor plan. Tudor is being looked at as well. So that was one of the things that we kind of took into account here is what's already kind of underway or what's moving forward? Because we don't want to sit there and be like, let's rehash what's already being done and instead notice that there's other areas that need focus. And you're seeing that kind of on the eastern side.
Yeah.
Tudor North.
Yeah, that's something that stood out. It seemed to be much focused in that area, which I can see does need help, so, yeah. I think there's other people that have questions, you can come back to me, I've got more.
Kevin Trust.
Thank you. You know, the Assembly has an ordinance we'll be voting on at the next meeting, which is, I believe it's just limited to the downtown corridor, which is a no right turn on red, which my understanding had to do with data that, you know, there've been a lot of pedestrian vehicle accidents due to this. But it, it looks like, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, a lot of those accidents, although there may be some there, are primarily outside of that downtown corridor. And do we know like how big of a problem is? Does this talk about a right turn on red as a specific incident? I know that we recently had a fatality on C Street, which was a jaywalking incident. And so not crossing an intersection. And I know the Assembly also just made, removed the penalty for jaywalking, so whether or not that was wise. But how do you, how does this data either, you know, specifically address the dangers of intersections where individuals are turning right on a red light?
So I can start and then maybe Jeannie can follow up with the specific locations. But for the analysis itself, you know, our analysis was as good as the data that we had. So we don't have specific intersection level data that tells us if there's like what, what the turning movements are at signal. But we do know that, you know, angled crashes was a large contributing factor. And I know that when Jeannie started diving deeper into these corridors, that was an aspect that she started to take a look at. So maybe, Jeannie, you want to talk a bit about that?
Sure, so, so like Taylor said, we only have the data that's in the crash report. So sometimes, especially lots of right turn on red, I think are pedestrian vehicle or bicycle vehicle. And for some reason, the police reports tend to not tell you what the vehicles were doing on those crashes. So that's a difficulty of the data. But I did look at that in all of the corridors and I think there are a couple of, I mean, so I only did a deep dive on those five. I think there are some places where it talked about, like, so no right turn on red is one way to deal with that. Also, leading pedestrian interval is another way to try and deal with that. So those are identified.
Okay, yeah, because it seems to me logically it would be best to identify those intersections that are having the highest issues and addressing those specific intersections, rather than an area-wide traffic approach that may be a little too broad. I guess my thought on that, just as we deal with this. And then I don't know how that goes into it, you know, having, I've, I've born and raised in this town. I've been hit three times by cars on, while bicycling. And it all comes down to basically the same thing, which is, you know, on mine, most of them were the same situation where even though the bicycle had the right of way, an individual turning right into a parking lot, not at a red light, but not noticing that someone's on the bike trail or someone not stopping at the stop sign, driving through the stop sign, not realizing that's a pedestrian. So, you know, I think it's all, for me, it's always come down to the way I quit getting hit was, you know, assume that you're always going to lose when you're on a bicycle. You'll always lose, and always make direct eye contact, eye contact with drivers. I don't know how you, and that's education, which is if you're not making eye contact with them, assume they don't know that you exist. And so, and, and I guess we do it, but this is fantastic, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, Kevin, just a quick question before you sign off there. Did you say there was some sort of legislation that just recently passed when you started your talking points?
It hasn't passed. It was, it was delayed from the last assembly meeting and it's going to be at the next assembly meeting. It's a, it's an ordinance drafted by Dan Boland, who's also on the Policy Committee, which was to eliminate right turn on red within the downtown corridor. And I guess part of the concern is, one, you know, I don't, I, you know, and I think, I think what Dan's doing here, I think, I know that the problem he's trying to address. One is, I don't think outside of our Transportation Board, anybody has any idea what the boundaries of the downtown corridor are. Like, so where is that? I mean, I'm, I'm an AMATs and I couldn't tell you. I mean, I could guess, or the Midtown Corridor or any of these. So where, where exactly do those levels lie? And then all the signs that would have to be placed, because you would have to label every intersection with a light in order to train new people. So I guess for me, and so it's up at the next assembly meeting, which is Tuesday night. It's in the 14s for a continued public hearing, or excuse me, 13s for a continued public hearing. But, yeah, I mean, I understand the issue that we have, particularly as far as pedestrian safety, it's always been a big issue. I mean, I, I had two friends in high school pass away. They were, you know, one on a bike, one on a skateboard who were hit by cars back in the 80s. So, you know, it's, it's a dangerous town, particularly because during the winter, the drivers get so used to not looking for pedestrian traffic. And then there's an explosion of it comes spring when the trails clear and like overnight, you have pedestrians everywhere. And, you know, the same thing with motorcycles. They get used to not looking for motorcycles, not checking the blind spots adequately. And so those habits that you develop over the long winter months, unfortunately, you have to break them, otherwise it can end in catastrophe come summertime.
Yeah. No, thank you for the, the background on that. When we started this plan, I think it was early 2023. And so we, you know, looked at other plans for what countermeasures are being used and had conversation with stakeholders about what countermeasures would be viable. And the no right turn on red at the time, I don't think came up because I think it was kind of like a speed camera thing, like, oh, don't see those, don't say those words together. So it's good to hear that there's, you know, this ordinance coming forward now because it, you know, if people are comfortable with it, I think that's a solution that we could incorporate into the plan. We didn't, I think, for, for that reason.
Yeah, excellent. Well, thank you for the data. I really appreciate you putting this presentation. I look forward to digging in deeper, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, Sean Holland had a thing real quick and then Taylor. We'll get Sean's ask, I probably missed it, how often is the safety plan updated? So right now, we don't have anything in place for how often we plan on updating it, but I would recommend a pretty routinely set schedule of updating the plan every maybe like two or four years, depending on what we're comfortable with. We still have to figure that out. I know the federal performance measures for safety targets are every year, but I believe that's changed or is changing, how often they have to be updated or when we have to submit them. So I think we need to look into that a little more. And then as part of our discussion and approval of this, it'd be nice to get some direction from the committees on how often they expect it to be updated by staff. And then we could start building that into our work program. Okay, now, Taylor.
Great.
Keegan, in the room.
Hi. I'm Taylor Keegan, I represent Parks and Parks. I have, on page 56, you guys list out the Tier 1 priorities. And I really appreciate how you guys did this and showed the points per high-concern location. What would be really helpful is if you could add maybe a additional area where you highlight the timeline. So for example, the Benson Boulevard, 102 and 103, Northern Lights Boulevard, it says that they're in the tip in the existing project or plan, but knowing like what FY would be super helpful. I know that the tip's a living document, but just giving people a little bit of an idea. And, yeah, or a spectrum of time for these projects would be helpful.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really good idea. While, while we're on page 56 with the Tier 1, the page after, well, the page before is 55, which is the map I showed with all the priority corridors on it, A through I. And then the information on page 57, the Tier 2 corridors, it was supposed to match that. For some reason, it got a little bit jumbled. We've already fixed it so that the A through I that you see on page 57 match the map. So just while we were in that section, I wanted to make that point too. I didn't make it during the presentation, but thank you for that comment.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the committee members? Yes?
Zach Hartman for the Muni Traffic Engineering Department. It sounds like you guys have greatly expanded the countermeasures on the profiles and index, which is great. Along those lines, I'm wondering- Along those lines, I'm wondering if by only digging into the five corridors. If there's a chance that we might be limiting our options on. Grant opportunities like near term or in future funding cycles by only looking at these, you know, B, C, E, A and G.
I don't, I don't think so. Um, I mean, I don't know what the costs are per corridor, but for the safe streets for all grants for implementation funds, I mean, we've been seeing. Grants awarded probably anywhere from like a million dollars up to probably twenty some odd million dollars. And I think this is kind of like a once in a lifetime opportunity for. For that much money if you choose to pursue it. And so I guess how many corridors, um. Or locations could you get done with that amount of money? And then even after doing that. There's still, I think, a lot of information in the plan to point you towards other corridors, um. Or systemic type locations through those those profiles where you could apply for, you know. HCP funding or other types of funding for for safety improvements to get you through probably the next at least five years. And. You know, Aaron just mentioned this plan might be updated, um, even more frequently than that. So I I think there's plenty in here, um. For for the next five years.
I think a lot of it is we had a lot of limited funding uh, for this project on what we could develop for the corridor profiles. And if the corridor profiles are successful and helpful, as we update this and as those corridors get updated themselves, we can always expand or add more to it. Because it's recognized we may not address every corridor in like a year or two. And it may be like, okay, our first iteration had this, and now we have a little more money to do another update. We can add a few more. That we recognize are like an immediate concern that we need to look at. Or say a a planning project fell through on some of the other corridors that we're identifying. And we're not going to have a plan or project in the near term. Let's go back and look at that corridors that was identified as a tier one. I think there's a lot of flexibility built into this plan. And that was kind of the hope from the beginning is let people know that it's not just a one and done, we're never going to see it again. It's a constantly updated and used document for anyone and whoever else would like to use it.
The notice of funding actually came out today uh, for the next round of safe streets for and roads for all funding with the applications due in. May, so just something to keep in mind that the minute this plan gets approved, it's. It's ready to go. It's 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 compliant for you all to then be able to apply for implementation funds or demonstration funds if you choose.
Do you have any follow-up questions here?
Um, speaking of approval, I wonder if the project team has an idea of what. High-ranking officials and or governing bodies are going to sign on to this before May, hopefully.
Well, the approval process is bringing before the Technical Advisory Committee and the Policy Committee in March, and that's the final approval. If the uh, uh, municipality brokerage would like to adopt it on their own, even element of the comprehensive plan, they'll need to do that through their own process. Um, we're set up just to do the AMAT's approval and to kind of get everything started for us, because. Uh, like they said, once this is approved. Then AMATs, the municipality brokerage and DOT within our area become eligible for the safe streets for all grant opportunities. So it's kind of like waiting for us to get it done, honestly. Okay, uh, I see Brandon, but just a second. Uh, does any other committee members have comments, questions?
Like a follow-up Zach's question, and that's why I asked about Midtown, because we have a million dollars that was um. Added last year for Denali Street. And Brandon and I were kind of eyeballing that road corridor as a good candidate, maybe for a safe streets for all. The rant opportunity in the future. So I'm just wondering the timing of it. Is this something because it wasn't included? That it wouldn't be strategic to apply for that?
No, and Nicole, correct me if I'm wrong, but once.
I'm trying to understand.
Once we get this plan in place, because it followed the safe streets for all. We are now eligible to put in whatever we want, whatever grant application we want for the safe streets for all. As long as we have data that shows that there's an actual need there. Um, it doesn't have to only be one of the five corridors that we outlined and did the deep dive on, right?
Correct, yeah. Um, as long as you can see, uh, this corridor or location in some way, shape or form. In the plan, uh, maybe a lot of the safety profiles fall in this particular corridor. So even if it's not on like our, you know, high injury network. Uh, a lot of the systemic issues might be there and that's still seeing, seeing the corridor in the plan. So yes. We could um, figure out how to make that eligible. I I was just looking at the plan too. So in addition to the priority map, there's a bunch of other maps in this document, um, forty, page forty-nine. In particular, I don't know if anyone's got the plan in front of them, or actually I could probably share my screen here. Um, that one has just the the crash data and like the 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 segment and intersection analysis. So it looks a little different. From the the priority map. So hold on one second. My computer's just a little bit slow here. There you go. So this is another map that's in here that could be useful for um, safe streets and roads for all funding, because this is showing, um. You know, other um, high injury intersections and and segments that just weren't prioritized because they didn't fall within some of that criteria that we looked at.
Thank you.
You guys, it was all you had any?
I mean, as far as funding, that that's that answered my question.
Taylor.
And I I'm sorry if this is in the plan, but did you have any overlays with. Safe routes to schools or anything that helps us use that as an additional advocacy tool?
We um, overlaid with the AMAT's non-motorized plan. Um, and so we looked at where the recommended. Network was for both the pedestrians and bicyclists and use that in our decision-making. So I don't know how much that particular. Layer also factors in kind of the the school component.
That's something we can do in-house, but uh, I know some of those intersections are directly adjacent to our middle school and elementary schools. So. That's of interest, I think, to our community.
Any other questions or comments from the committee? Okay, now questions and comments from non-committee members. Brandon, did you still have a question?
I think Melinda's question answered mine, which was related to. You know, if we as a municipality apply for streets, safe streets for all as something that's in our right of way as opposed to the. Five projects that were chosen, um, if this plan would work for that, it sounds like it will.
Yeah, and I think again, as long as you can show the data and how it matches up with the plan that was developed here, a lot of it. And again, the data we got and used was from the municipality of Anchorage. Okay, uh, Matthew Stitchick.
Yeah, thanks, Aaron. Um. I, I'm not sure I fully understood uh, the tier one and tier two. Uh, designations, but as I understand it, tier tier one has a plan to be addressed already. The thirteen. Um, corridors identified as tier one, they're they're already in a plan for some sort of upgrade and it looks like the. Is is that correct? Or is it just that, um?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so then of the of the tier twos, do you have any recommendation on what type of. Uh, safety improvement would be most effective for each or any of those um, locations? Is it mostly focused on, should we focus on speed, focus on lighting? What what would give us the biggest return for investment?
Mm-hmm.
As far as safety?
What we did is developed um, a cut sheet for each of those five locations that gets at, um, well, I guess, here we go. Taylor's just pulled it up. Thank you. It's so much easier. This is what it looks like. So yes, uh, each location has solutioning. Um, as well as why we picked that solutioning because of the particular types of collision patterns that were occurring there.
Okay, thank you. I didn't catch that on my scan through it.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, um, well, I hope uh, all the committee members found this useful. Um, I do want to thank the consultants very much for coming in um, today at the last minute um. To provide this presentation. I really appreciate it. And I also really appreciate everybody's hard work on this plan. So. At this point, um, we are good to go ahead and move this forward for final approval in March. So both the Technical Advisory Committee and Policy Committee members can expect to see it on the agendas for those that month. So if you have any questions after the meeting, just shoot me an email and we'll help out as best we can. Thank you all.
Thank you.